I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School Board, District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. As my interlopers.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we remain standing in a moment of silence for Marjorie Carlson, a food service employee from 1963 through 1990 who passed away on August 13, 2022. Thank you. All right. For note, Mr. Talarico, Mrs. Cohen, and Mr. Dutek are all excused for this evening. Special thanks to Dave Lowery for coming to visit us from the Erie County Association of Schoolboys. Onto 4.0 presentations. 4.1, we've got our summer school presentation. All right. That is going to be Jenna Lutere and Jeremy Lynch.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jenna Lutere. I am the Lancaster Elementary Summer School Principal. Before we talk a little bit about our programs, I wanted to give a special thanks to, first of all, the Lancaster Board of Education, our district office administration, Erie One Bosse's, especially Ashley, who helps us create all of our classes in E-School, our building administration, especially Mrs. Bold, who was very gracious this summer in letting us use her school, William Street School, for all three of our programs, both the elementary, middle school, and secondary programs. Our technology mentors, our nurse, she was awesome, our counseling staff, district office and building secretaries, as well as our building cleaners and custodians. So like I mentioned before, I am the Elementary Summer School Principal or the Jump Start Principal. As you can see, I'm a pretty big Disney nerd, so Olaf is up there because that was the theme of our summer school again this summer. It was Olaf's coolest summer ever. And to my left here is my intern Evelyn Turena, who helped me as an assistant principal. She's going to talk a little bit about our program, so I'm going to pass it over to her for just a little bit. Hello, everyone. Okay, so in their summer school Jump Start program, there was 143 students registered. Students were incoming first through sixth grade students. Referrals were based upon teacher recommendations and parent requests. We had 13 teachers, including two amazing specialized teachers. There was an average of about 13 students per teacher in each classroom. Instruction was centered around literacy and math emphasis, and project-based learning was the main form of instruction. The teachers are listed to the left. I'm going to talk a little bit about the data from our summer school program. It's pretty interesting that since I've taken over the program two years ago, it was kind of our COVID year two years ago. Last year, we kind of had that hybrid transition year, and then this was our first full year almost back to normal, if you would call it that. So I think our biggest jump was our kindergarten section. We went from 8.3% to almost tripling that number. I think that's a huge thanks to our kindergarten screening that has happened. So we didn't get to do it two years ago because we weren't allowing parents into our building. But this past summer, we did allow parents in, so we were able to screen those kiddos and get more referrals than we had ever had before for our kindergarten kiddo. So that was an awesome thing, and I'm a kindergarten teacher, so I loved it. Thank you for allowing us to have that many sections of kindergarten for sure. Like I said before, two years ago, we had kind of that virtual year of summer school. So you can see how much our program has grown in just those three years. We had 48 students, 125, and then 2022, 143 students. So it continues to grow every summer, and thank you to you for allowing us to hire more teachers than we have ever had before, especially our special education teachers who are able to push in and pull out students from our classrooms. They make a huge difference in our program. So like we mentioned before, our theme of our summer school is the coolest summer ever. It's a theme that we used again from last year because all of my teachers really loved it, and they suggested that we use the same theme. It is very heavily project-based learning where we incorporate social studies, science, use of technology, and we are very lucky to have Chromebooks for all of our kiddos. One awesome thing about having our project-based learning as our theme for summer school is that from day one, students are working on a culminating project that they then present to parents on the very last day. So we invite parents not into our school but outside of William Street School to come look at all of their projects, from the ice cream trucks they've made to making lemonade for their parents right in front of them. That's a really awesome thing to come see. Okay, so we had four spirit days, Wear Half Day, Sunglass Day, Wear Blue, and Christmas in July. Kids really enjoy dressing up for those special Thursdays. We also had Freezy Pops each Thursday. And again, project-based learning was the main mode of instruction. Our reading incentive was a reading... So we had 68 reading logs that were submitted, and students were able to earn free ice cream coupons. We partnered with Frosties, locally owned. The last thing I want to talk about is our new extended day program that we had this year. So something new that we had never done before, and thank you to Nilam, our other intern, who has helped us a ton create this program. But teachers were able to create programs based on pretty much anything that they wanted to instruct students on, and then parents could sign their kiddos up for these programs. So we had things like virtual field trips, summer steam challenges, and clever creations. You can see in some of our pictures here, the one on the left is a group of boys trying sushi for the first time in their virtual field trip to Japan, and the one on the right there is the marshmallow launchers. So they created these marshmallow shooters, and they were testing how far they can get their marshmallows to launch. So it was an awesome thing to see for an extended day of our program. We had the same thing happening with the secondary school. They were doing some other programs as well, and I have pictures here. Oops, I went too fast. Just from some of the other programs that they had for secondary. And I will now pass it over to Jeremy Lynch, who will talk about the middle school and high school program.
Thank you. How are y'all doing? All right, I'm Jeremy Lynch. I was the principal for the secondary program, both middle school and high school. Nilam Miegelski, she was administrative intern for us. She did a great job, along with Jeff Hopkes. I can't thank them enough. They worked from the start, the time we started in April to all the way through the Regent's exams in August. They put in countless hours, and they really did a lot of good things for us and had a lot of good dedication to the Lancaster School District. Our staff is amazing. Our teachers, we had a ton of teachers that put in a lot of time, right? They were there all the time. We never had any teachers miss any days. Jill Santora was our technology mentor. She made sure that we had Chromebook carts and computers for all teachers. Michelle Lisinski was our administrative assistant. She really made the day-to-day operations go. If it wasn't for Michelle, I don't know if we would have got through the summer. She, like I said, she's the one that kept it going. So we appreciate her. For the middle school program, we had 22 students enrolled. The program was recommended for all students that failed two or more classes, and it was open to any student that wanted to take classes for enrichment, okay? Students took four classes. Their day consisted of 8:00 AM to noon every single day. They had four classes. One was ELA, Social Studies and Math, for enrichment, and then they alternated PE and social-emotional learning on a daily basis, or an every-on-the-day basis. This is an example of our outside-the-box learning that Sebastian Guerra, our social studies teacher, was outside in there doing an activity on the Civil War. Really good activity for our students and children. A great opportunity for us to get outside of the classroom. They moved around the building, and they weren't just sitting in one area. So it was a good day. Program highlights for the middle school over 90% of our students attended on a regular basis. 100% of the students completed the program were better-prepared for the upcoming school year. 80% of the students received breakfast, lunch, or breakfast or lunch during the summer school day. That's something that we implemented about a week into the program since we were doing the lunch pickups on a weekly basis. We implemented that into a daily basis into our summer school program for any child that needed any type of food, whether it be breakfast or lunch. If they needed a lunch, they left with a lunch throughout that day. If they wanted breakfast, they could wrap this and eat. So it was something that really helped our students concentrate for the rest of the year. This is on to our summer school for high school. We had amazing teachers here as well. They worked well together. Like I said, they do anything that's asked. That's the thing about Lancaster schools is that teachers will go above and beyond, and that even included the summertime. Exams, anything we needed for the exam schedule, they were making sure that they were there, or they extended their days on the exam days more than the normal school day. Our high school program was based on enrichment, or I'm sorry, credit retrieval. We provided opportunities for students to challenge August exams. Students had the opportunity to take courses in social-emotional learning, and all students benefited from a social-emotional learning push-in as well. So not only could they take social-emotional as a class, as social-emotional learning as a class, they could also do it as a push-in if they had to take two or more classes. One of our highlights of our summer school program for the secondary was our Junior Police Academy. We had 22 students enroll in the Forensics and Police Academy, a portion of first-time credit. This was a group of students that had taken this first-time credit. It was a program that was implemented last year, and we continued it on this year. This academy designed to build a positive relationship with the community and the police officers within the community. They expose students to the works of the National Police Office. Students experience hands-on police activities with simulated police work. They were in the classroom, they're out of the classroom, they're doing activities on the track. They were doing SWAT training, field sobriety tests. They were doing anything that a police officer does, you needed, they did. So it was a amazing program. They had bikes out one day where they took the bikes out to the park. They had the drug dogs in, and they were teaching them all the ins and outs of that. So that was a pretty cool opportunity for our kids to see. Again, they were up at 6:00 every morning doing their PT on the track, and they didn't miss a day. As far as the rest of the program, we had 66 students that took at least one class. Approximately 50% of those students did have an IEP. We offered 15 different classes and eight Regent's exams. 90 course credits were earned by our 66 students. Okay, so some of those students did take two or more classes. And we had 72% of those students that challenged the August exams received credit for those exams. So all in all, we felt we had a really good summer. We had some great things that happened with our groups of kids. And I would like to thank Dr. Bailey and School Board for having us there, Mr. Craseman for his continued support, and for everything that he helped us with throughout the year, Ms. Bold over at William Street School, and Michelle Ziegler for E-School and everything that we do with that. That is a main portion to our high school program, making sure that we have all the kids in the right classes and making sure that we have them have the attendance correct because when it's all said and done, we need to make sure they're in the right spots. So we appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you all so much. You know, I think about how important it is that we have these summer school programs, right? Lancaster, you know, talks frequently about, you know, 98, 99% graduation rate. And it's because of programs like this, right? So at the elementary level and at the secondary level, these kids, you know, need this. They love it, right? So I think it's super important, and I want to thank each and every one of you, all the teachers, all the staff, because this is super important, and this is why Lancaster is a destination school district. Thank you. All right, on to 4.0. Got a tenure certificate presentation. And Dr. Mark Wielley, Mr. Craseman, Mr. Armstrong.
All right, so it's my pleasure tonight to talk about some of our really talented teachers who are earning tenure. You're going to hear me talk about several teachers tonight, and I'll be highlighting many of their individual achievements. However, I think it should be noted that all of these very talented individuals spent the bulk of their probationary period teaching during the ups and downs of COVID. Their resilience and perseverance and dedication is truly astounding. This career field has seen people leave because of COVID, and these people stuck with it. So in my mind, that's noteworthy and deserves praise, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of the new teachers who stuck with that and have stayed in the profession and are doing great things with our kids. So thank you. The first one is Amanda Lucarelli. Mrs. Lucarelli joined William Street as a fourth-grade teacher on a three-person team this past school year in 2122. Her previous years were at Hillview, where she taught grades kindergarten, I and II. So she's running the gamut here. I can say, as someone who has taught many different grade levels, that there's a big difference between teaching kindergarteners and teaching fourth graders. To make those kind of changes in the middle of a pandemic with such grace is no party. From the beginning, Mrs. Lucarelli has shown a balance of emotional intelligence and intellectual intelligence. She's able to see this in her students, too. The very first time I formally observed her, she and her students were working in small groups. While she had the ultimate control of who was going to be in each group, she did let some of the students self-select in. That was based on their own feelings about the content, and in some cases, just their need for a little more love that day. It was something that was really powerful to see. As I look back on my observation notes regarding her, I saw a pattern of very strong, positive comments about feedback to students, positive student interactions and participation, and monitoring of student learning and adjusting to meet their needs. She's an active participant in after-school activities like Halloween Night, Holiday Night, Literacy Night, The Talent Show, just to name a few. She's an exceptional educator who cares deeply about her students, and it's a pleasure to have her working here with our students, and I congratulate her. All right. Ms. Moken is talented in so many ways, but her ability to tap into prior knowledge and student interests has set the stage for new learning and makes it exceptional. During my last observation of her, she had children remembering back to concepts that they learned in kindergarten. For those of you who have kindergarten-age students, you know that it's hard to get them to remember back to yesterday. So that's something in itself. But then she tied that to the concept of Ten Frames that they were using in First Grade Edition. That flowed flawlessly into a conversation about taking things away. One student was very proud of herself and waved his arm in the air and stated, "That's subtraction." That kind of joy and excitement is evident every time you walk in her room. Ms. Moken was also one of the teachers who took on the challenge of teaching fully-remote students during the 2021 pandemic. Teaching remotely is a completely different skillset than teaching in front of a live class. But she quickly became an expert on teaching children using engaging methods over the computer. It was impressive to witness. Ms. Moken is incredibly professional. She is child-centered. She is calm, and she is loving. Her demeanor establishes the ideal classroom environment for students in the early primary years. She serves on building planning team and has been the PTO liaison. Court Street is thrilled to have her as part of their team, and we look forward to her teaching with us for years to come. Congratulations. All right, finally, tonight, we have Samantha Powless. Mrs. Powless has had an exciting beginning of her career here in Lancaster. Most notably, she was one of four teachers who was selected in this past year to be one of our K3 math specialists. Despite being a relatively new teacher, she stood apart in the math specialist interview process. She's also proven that she excels in diagnosing student challenges and creating individualized remediation plans to help our students succeed. Prior to that, she found creative ways to introduce and support concepts in her general education classroom. In one of my observations of her, she was teaching fact versus opinion. This is something that very young children struggle with. Again, if you have young children, you know that their opinion is fact to them. So she started playing the game Would You Rather, which involved standing in certain points in the room. Not only is this creative, but it used brain research that tells us that children learn better when they're up and moving and can associate a new skill with physical movement. Samantha's been an amazing addition to Hillview and the Lancaster team. She's a teacher leader, a team player, and is always willing to help her colleagues, especially with technology questions or needs. And she herself is continuously learning. She's also extremely artistic and is very talented in cricketing. You've seen the fancy decorations in elementary school teachers' classrooms. That's cricket. She's a very talented cricketer and helps others with decorating their classrooms. Samantha's also a Lancaster softball coach, and her students and players are better having known her. I know they'll remember her for years to come, and we're excited to have her with us. Congratulations.
I have one rock, paper, scissors, so I get to go next. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize some fabulous educators who are being recognized for earning their tenure in their respective disciplines at the secondary level. This is a tremendous honor, and I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of the tenure recipients on their accomplishment this evening. The first person I'd like to call down is Mr. Eric Rupp. That good-looking guy right there. Mr. Rupp is a remarkable educator who's been working with our high school Social Studies Department over the course of the past four years and last year, taking on the role of the district's athletic director. In his role as a social studies teacher, he shared his passion and enthusiasm for history, government, economics with the students of the Lancaster Alternative Program as well as the Lancaster community. He serves as a tremendous asset to the Social Studies Department while working with the students in his classroom. As I've gotten to know Mr. Rupp, he demonstrates incredible qualities that make him not only a phenomenal educator, but a phenomenal person. He's a team player. He's a leader that puts his students at his primary focus. He challenges his students as a teacher, as a coach, and as a leader through the use of various student engagement techniques, simulations, and other hands-on activities to engage his students and athletes in whatever content and skills they need to work on for that particular day. Mr. Rupp is extremely innovative, and that skillset is demonstrated in every facet of his work. For just over the past year, he has served as the district's athletic director, and in that role, he has worked incredibly hard to continue to build on the tradition of athletic excellence here in Lancaster. In this incredibly challenging role, and it really is an incredibly challenging role, he has established himself as a leader who is visible, communicative, accessible, and visionary. He is a tremendous leader, and I know I am personally very thankful to be on the same team as Mr. Rupp. Thank you, Eric, for all you do for the kids in Lancaster. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call down Caterina Luca. Kat, come on down. Mrs. Luca is a charismatic individual who's been working with the high school Science Department for the past four years. She shares her passion and enthusiasm for science with the students of the Lancaster community. Just like Mr. Rupp, she's a tremendous asset to the community as a whole, as well to the LHS Science Department. As I've gotten to know Mrs. Luca, I can see that she has a passion for her students. She truly cares about each student that steps into her classroom on a daily basis. Over the course of her four years in the high school and also working in the alternative program, even students who no longer have her as a teacher will just stop by and say hello and extend some warm wishes. Mrs. Luca truly believes in the power of relationship building and exercises that with her students on a daily basis. In addition to her phenomenal relationship-building skills, she also works extremely hard to find ways to engage students with real-life experiences and scenarios to bring science concepts to life. While observing Mrs. Luca's classes, I've seen her provide different real-life scenarios for students where they work independently and collaboratively to come up with solutions to different experiments that she coordinates in her classroom. She continuously challenges her students to apply the information learned from class to a laboratory setting so they can demonstrate their knowledge and understanding of those concepts. Even as the observer in her class, I can say that I have learned and relearned many concepts while being in the classroom. And I took high school biology 30 years ago. Congratulations, Kat. Thank you for all that you do with our students. Kirsten Eurias, come on down. Dr. Eurias is a driven and committed educator who is always willing to go the extra mile for her students. Her positive attitude is contagious and always has a smile on her face, and on a daily basis welcomes her students to the world of chemistry. Again, like our previous recipients, Dr. is a tremendous asset both to the Science Department and to the community as a whole. In my observations of Dr. Eurias in the classroom, it would be appropriate to say that she is a student-centered instructor. She has the ability to explain complex chemistry concepts using terms that are relatable and understandable to high school students. For example, one of my favorite lesson observations is a thing called the Rubber Duck Hotel. Students were exposed to a model of balancing protons, electrons, and neutrons while registering rubber ducks into hotel rooms. And in this lesson, And in this lesson, students were engaged in balancing the number of ducks going in and out of the hotel rooms, but later in the lesson, students were able to demonstrate their understanding of balancing equations by using the same concept of balancing the number of ducks in each of the different hotel rooms to protons, electrons, and neutrons. That was like three years ago, and I still remember. Dr. Eurias is a tremendous asset to Lancaster High School and to her students. Her creativity, her positive attitude, her collaboration skills, and her passion for students are a recipe for success, both for her and for the students of Lancaster. Thank you, Kirsten, for all that you do for our kids. Cheryl Randall, come on down. You're my last contestant on the prices, right? If I had to choose a word to describe Cheryl Randall, I think that word is versatile. I can honestly say Mrs. Randall has worn more hats and taken on more unique responsibilities in a four-year period than anyone I've ever encountered in my 21 years in this business. Let me take you on a quick journey for Cheryl. Cheryl first came to us as our website auditor and worked in collaboration with administrators, teachers, OSU's personnel, public relations, the Office of Civil Rights, and many others that I probably don't even know about. And through her hard work and commitment over the course of her first couple of years, the district was removed from the Office of Civil Rights naughty list of having a non-compliant website. A colossal undertaking that Cheryl led us through. Cheryl then became a technology mentor, where she provided training, guidance, and support for teachers, staff, administrators around different technology tools ranging from instructional tools to administrative productivity tools. She met each challenge in that role with an eagerness to learn, along with a commitment to seeing the job through to completion, and always done with a smile on her face. Her work ethic is incredible, and it is truly second to none. But if that wasn't enough, last school year, in the middle of COVID, she also stepped to fill in as interim assistant principal of Lancaster High School. And in that role, she helped teachers with their instructional practices, but also became the resident COVID czar. Cheryl did contact tracing, worked with the Erie County Health Department, contacted families, stayed current on policies and regulations, and did all of that with the highest level of integrity and respect, also with a smile on her face. She was instrumental in helping Lancaster High School and the district as a whole navigate the COVID-19 pandemic. That was a huge lift. As you can see, Cheryl is extremely versatile, so I think the word fits perfectly. She's intelligent, she's a go-getter, she's a helper, she's a teacher, she's an organizer, she's an all-around all-star. We are extremely fortunate to have her as part of our team, and I look forward to working with Cheryl for many more years to come. Thank you, Cheryl, for all the work you've done for Lancaster Central School District. John Armstrong, come up next.
Folks, I love these ceremonies. I just get the biggest kick out of celebrating the accomplishment of people putting in the hard work to earn tenure. And I would add, the next group of five professionals I'm going to discuss briefly has been a great pleasure to work with. Their accomplishments, their impact in such a short time, really four years, I think, for all of them here in Lancaster, on our district and our special education programs in particular, is just incredible and has certainly led to them earning tenure. When I think, when Dr. Belli interviews all candidates and recommends the hiring to the board, he always tells them, "Take care of our kids." And I'm going to tell you, with these folks I'm about to speak about, they certainly have done that and a lot, lot more. So I'm very pleased that everyone is here tonight to receive their tenure certificate. So we can start out with Mrs. Jillian Dean. I got to start out with the three-letter word here. Just wow. I mean, this woman is, I mean, I don't even know how to describe it some days. She has came on board with us, you know, four years ago, took over from the ever-popular Mr. Candela, our career development in occupational studies program. And her energy, creativity, passion for our students has just led to increased success in this area, and it's preparing our students to be successful as they transition to work or to further training or onto college. She has grown the program tirelessly. She works incredibly well with other folks at the high school. And I forgot to point out, Jill also shares the responsibility, because she works at Clarence and does the same thing. So it's a shared position, but I always think that I have Jill just to ourselves here in Lancaster because she works so doggone hard. So I'm sure they think the same way in Clarence. So Jill's determined efforts have led to large increases in students earning their CDOs credential, and it means that these students are career and work-ready. She has phenomenal attention to detail, as anybody that works with her knows, and exhibits, continues to exhibit incredible energy and enthusiasm. She does this, as I mentioned, in two districts, and we're glad to share her some of the time with parents, but we like her all the time. Jill has also helped out by chairing CSE meetings. We were just meeting on that today, which is a huge help to Aaron and I. And she's creating some incredible relationships in the district because she's developed some very unique internships for our students to meet some very specialized needs for our students. So Jillian is a leader by example, and the sky is absolutely the limit for her here with our district. Congratulations on your tenure, Jill. Danielle Griswold. Danielle is a special education teacher at Como Park Elementary. Danielle started with Lancaster again four years ago with much experience from an agency school where she worked, had a ton of experience working with students with autism. If memory serves me too, in an earlier stint, right, we were talking earlier, she was also a teacher aide for us for about a year or so before, I think you went off to summer thereabouts at that time, right? And at that time, she had worked at Hillview in one of our integrated program classrooms. So when she started out with us at Court Street, she traveled, I think she also worked at Hillview. And then, as I was talking to Mrs. Marsonelli, the principal at Como Park Elementary today when I was over, she says, "I thanked the day that Danielle transferred over to Como Park," and this was completely unsolicited, I must say. But when I was talking to Molly this morning when I was at Como Park, she just says, like, she just absolutely loves having Danielle work as a teacher in her building. Molly knows that Danielle is always willing to help out, volunteer, and when you do something and say you're going to do it, you get the job done, and I know that about you as well, too. I've been very fortunate to observe and work with, observe her classrooms, in particular her reading instruction, and work with Danielle many times over many meetings and many students over the past four years. She is just a phenomenal reading instructor, which is very near and dear to my heart, and she's extremely well-organized and just absolutely loves her students. You can see it when you see her lessons. So Danielle has worked, she started out, I think, starting out at Como Park as a consultant teacher, but then was able to take a position there as developing our new integrated program at Como Park Elementary, and has just proven to have done a phenomenal job. Parents ask for her, they rave about her, her colleagues want to work with her at Como Park to develop the best opportunities for our students in that program. Danielle has certainly earned the recognition of tenure, and congratulations. Mrs. Christine Kinmartin. So Christine is currently a special education teacher at Court Street Elementary for the past, help me out here, yeah, and works in our integrated program, working with Kenner Edgerton first-grade students. So I think Christine was helping us out this summer doing some interviewing for a position, and we were talking a little bit about this, but I distinctly remember in the spring, I think April of 2018, meeting her for the very first time at Teacher Recruitment Day at the Buffalo Convention Center, right, pre-COVID, right? We got to meet and screen people in person, it was awesome. And you know, sometimes when you meet somebody, right, for the first time, you get an interview or whatever, and you just know, right? So that was the case. You just know you're fortunate to meet somebody that's special, and you just know they're a great person and a talented educator. That was the case on that day back in April. And also, I point this out too, Greg Hare, Assistant Principal at William Street School, we were both there, right? And he's like, "You know, John, I got to tell you about this candidate I met, you know, a teacher," at the end of the day, we were debriefing a little bit, and he's like, and I said, "Well, I think I might know who you're talking about." And of course, we were talking about Christine, and we had a little bit of a tussle. I think Greg had some idea she was going to work in the regular classroom setting, but we, the special education department fortunately prevailed. She prevailed, of course, and was hired, and I did sort of talk her into working with older children. Was that me that did that? You trusted me, and I appreciate that. And she went over to William Street and worked, I think, with fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade students in our special classes, one of our special classes there, and just knocked it out of the park with some children that had some, you know, some significant needs, and just was phenomenal. And then when I speak to, and then she transferred over to Court Street, and it's back to her, I think, her love of a little bit younger children, right? And she's been there now for two years in her, as I mentioned, in the integrated program. And when I speak to Jackie Kleiner, Jackie's like, "You know, best transfer ever." Mrs. Kleiner is the principal at Court Street, but just is very appreciative that she came over and joined her at Court Street. So I could go on and on, which I sometimes know to do. However, let me just summarize with Christine. She's a phenomenal teacher of all subjects as a special class teacher. I've watched her teach on repeated times, and she's just phenomenal. Parents and staff adore her and love all she does for her students, for her students and also for her colleagues. She truly does differentiate instruction, and that means that she has high expectations for her students and supports them to become as independent as possible. And she gets, she goes to where they are, and she lifts them up, and they always feel, I think they just feel better about being in her class. So Christine is a leader and will continue to excel with any role she takes on here in Lancaster. Congratulations on your tenure. Mr. Matt Kozlowski. Matt is a special education teacher at Lancaster Middle School. He's been in that role for about four years, mostly managing consult teacher caseloads as well as teaching special class, mostly math. Matt is also a certified math teacher, and he came to us after, I believe, some experience in the Rochester area, right, at a charter school. I've been fortunate to observe Matt on numerous occasions. He's particularly adept, as you might expect, at teaching math, to students that struggle with math concepts, because lessons are well-organized, engaging, and in addition, his classroom management skills are extraordinary. I mean, the kids get it, they know the routine, I think they feel safe in his class. Moreover, with Matt, I've been particularly impressed with his ability to help students improve their attention and their behavior. He's done an excellent job of reaching students that need guidance in that regard, need behavioral support, and helping them become successful and more independent. He goes to where the students are, the kids are, kind of assesses their needs, especially in the behavioral and attention areas, and then really encourages their success and supports them. He's been extraordinarily successful and has done good work on several occasions with some high-need students, so I appreciate that, Matt. As a side note, Mrs. Cannon and I were chatting about this earlier. He even went out of his way to learn some family and consumer sciences, formerly home economics skills, sort of inside of it. And in particular, he did really, we're kind of teasing him a little bit, but he went out of his way to learn a skill that some of us can't do. And by doing that, he was able to work with a student and ensure their success. I think that was last year, he did an excellent job. So I appreciate you going to help out. I appreciate, I really do appreciate that because you really made a huge difference to help a child out at the end of the year. For all these reasons and many more, Matt has earned the tenure recognition, and I know he'll continue to help our students at the middle school. Thank you, Matt. Wasn't cooking, no cooking. And in my area, Mrs. Eileen Boss. Eileen is a school psychologist here with us here in Lancaster, working, she's worked mostly at the high school and in particular has been a key member of the LAP program, the Lancaster Alternative Program at the high school. I'm fortunate. I think I'm fortunate because I get to work with Eileen a lot. Countless, really countless, committee on special education meetings, manifestation meetings, and so forth. We spent some time today, sort of trying to figure out a best path forward for some students that might need some more emotional support to be successful in our high school program. And I appreciate that. She's earnest and wants to help kids at all times. She's been a godsend to the students at the high school and to the staff, especially in the LAP program, the Alternative Program. She gets it, right? She gets the kids, she understands some of them that may have experienced trauma and how this affects students and how it can be challenging for teachers to teach such students, but she gets it and she understands how to help kids and staff and families. And for that, we deeply appreciate her efforts. When she evaluates students, which is a major role of a school psychologist, she's thorough. She is very comprehensive, and she truly obtains, I guess, a picture or a snapshot, if you will, through her reports and work of where a child is and what their needs might be in terms of any kind of programs or services or supports that are going to help them be successful. Very efficient, very organized in her approach. In addition, as I've alluded to, her colleagues adore and appreciate her willingness to always support them and do what is right for our students. Eileen is an incredibly huge asset to our school psychology team, the special education department, and certainly the district as a whole. I'm looking forward to her in a new role this year. She's going to be, she was assigned down to the middle school, and we're going to get her down there soon. She's filling in right now at the high school for a leave, but when she gets down there, I know she's going to have the same impact at the middle school. So for all these reasons and more, she most deservedly earns tenure or deserves tenure. Congratulations.
If we could really, all of the tenure recipients, if you could come forward to the front, we're going to do a quick group picture. Everybody could come back to the front.
Yes, everybody can come back to the front.
Thank you, Dr. Mark Valli, Mr. Frazman, and Mr. Armstrong. I probably don't have to tell this audience that educators are the most important job in the world, the hardest job in the world, and probably the most rewarding job in the world. Tenure marks a significant milestone in an educator's career. And we at Lancaster are lucky to have each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
On to 5.0, correspondence. We have no correspondence on record. 6.0, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve 6.1, the regular session from August 22, 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
We'd just like, again, to thank all of the teachers that have contributed and are supporting us, going to the left and right there. So back to NASA specifically, like to acknowledge and recognize them for their hard work and their dedication to the profession. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Candela. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. The LCTA would also like to, again, congratulate our newly-tenured teachers. The LCTA would also like to formally welcome back all of our students, staff, teachers to the start of what we would consider to be a normal school year, free of mask mandates, social distancing requirements, things like that. Lastly, we would also like to thank our friends in last for working so hard to get our buildings ready and open for the opening of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? On to 8.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? And 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valli?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell everyone that the opening days before school began were a smashing success, thanks to all those individuals who spent their summer and did such a wonderful job planning and preparing for these days. Never heard so many positive comments about the opening. And it was because of the hard work and dedication and planning of those individuals. It was a much-needed boost after this long stretch of COVID pain, and it already is paying dividends, and my hope is that it will continue. The first week of school was behind us. It was a very smooth and successful first week of school. Our building administration support staff did a wonderful job managing the week. The students enjoyed being back in class, and the teachers were absolutely fantastic and supported their students, and excited to have a normal start to the school year. So we're always excited to have our kids back in school, but for the first time in a few years, it was truly great to be back. So we just have to keep things rolling. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's help and support.
Thank you, Dr. Valli. On to 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? And 11.0, new business. 11.1 personnel items. 11.1.1 personnel changes. Do I have a motion for the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.0, business and financial items. Can I have a motion on 12.1, the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion on policy adoption 1530 for minutes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.3, the policy adoption 5130, budget adoption? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.4, can I have a motion on policy adoption 5230, acceptance of gifts, grants, and bequests to the school board? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.5, policy adoption 5570, financial accountability? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.6, policy adoption 5683, fire and emergency drills, bomb, bomb threats, and bus emergency drills? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.7, policy adoption 5740, qualifications of bus drivers? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.8, policy adoption 6140, employee medical examinations? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.9, policy adoption 7132, non-resident students? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.10, policy adoption 7554, suicide? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on State Environmental Quality Review Act? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.12, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion for the contract with the town of Lancaster's school liaison officer? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion for the contract with Erie One Bosse's, Title 2A, consultant service to peripel schools? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the contract with Maria Blask, Title 1, for St. Mary's Elementary? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion for the contract with Erie One Bosse's for room rental? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.17, can I have a motion for the contract with Deaf Access Services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I, 12.18, can I have a motion for the contract with Renaissance Addiction Services, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.19, can I have a motion on the contract with Gar Associates, LLC? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.20, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.21, can I have a motion on the grant acceptance for Whole Kids Foundation? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? 12.22, can I have a motion to appoint internal auditors and accept engagement letter? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.23, can I have a motion on the 2022, 2023 district goals? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 13.0, public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening. And 14.0 is our adjournment. So before we adjourn, let you know that October 3, 2022 will be our next meeting, our regular session, 7:00 p.m. right here, Lancaster High School Auditorium. 14.0, can I have a motion to adjourn? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.